...City Council Special Meeting for Tuesday, August the 28th. I now call this meeting to order. Please rise for our invocation by our municipal agents in Texas.
That's right. I'm hopeful that everyone will be. Thank you so much for the day, dear Lord. We thank you for having us unconditionally. Our plea to our meetings tonight will be held in a professional manner and that all things, what decisions we make, will be made to your honor and to your toward. I ask all of you to respect and Jesus' name and to worship His sake. Amen.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor Texas for that. I pledge allegiance to you, Texas, one state, under God, one individual. We do have a forum for tonight's meeting and attendance. Councilman David Johns, Councilwoman Loyola Kent Two, myself, Mayor Sissy Gonzalez-Diplo, Councilman Juan Ortiz, Councilman Nick Nisa, and Councilman Gerard Mendez. Thank you, Councilmen Mendez. At this time, we'll open the floor to any citizens' comments. Citizens have the opportunity to speak to us.
Good evening, Councilman. Mayor Kim Lohan. I just want to talk a little terribly about the proposed budget and a little more time now than I would have later on.
Hold on, we're having a hard time hearing up here. We have. Okay, can y'all hear out in the audience?
We can hear you, Mayor.
Okay. Justin?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, good. I'm real happy to see that the budget that the council is working on and the city manager has put together is a thorough base budget. We budget every year, but one thing that we have not done well over the years is actually execute that budget. If we look back over the last dozen years or so, we've had four years based on audits where the general fund balance is negative. General fund balance being one of the things that gets hit significantly or very closely by folks who want to provide financial services to the city. So that's not well. We've had three times over the same dozen years or so where the general fund balance has gone up a year over the previous year and then dropped the next two years. So we're having a really hard time managing the budget even though we spent an awful lot of time, you guys spent an awful lot of time with your workshops and working on your budgets. I know you have some things that you have to deal with. This building, for example. Can't even correct my numbers, but it looks like there's about $350,000 a year that comes out of the city budget to support this building, which interestingly enough is more close to the street maintenance tax that you collect. We have the sports complex there in back that you have taxed, no doubt, that a million dollars of it actually went into the sports complex and you're supporting the debt service on that. The quality of construction on that particular facility doesn't seem to have been very well known, it was designed very well from what I can tell. So we've got some real difficult problems to face this year and ensuing years. There is good news, to me at least. The last time that we took a real serious attempt to correct our budget was in 2013 following the passage of the Insolvency Plan. And Henry O, who was our city manager at the time, and her and her staff were able to give us three consecutive years of gains in our general fund balance, gaining over that three years almost $700,000 from the $235,000, I think it was, negative balance. So you've got good people in place, you've got experienced people in place to do what you're doing. But my challenge to y'all as a council is that you're trying to develop or trying to build a general fund balance up to about a million and a half. So you've got 90 days, roughly a million and a half, so you've got 90 days of operating money in case of emergency. You can't make any decisions over this next several years, really, that a thousand here, a thousand there, something I want to do, something I'd like to do. You really need to stick to the budget. You need to stick to things that are important to the city, important to the function of the city, infrastructure, safety, those sorts of things. So that's my challenge to you. You've got this year, in at least three years, maybe six or seven years, to get us back to a million and a half. I've heard some real strong statements out of this council that you guys are wanting to cut spending and you want to be good at managing money for the city. Just do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lohan. Any other citizens' comments? Okay, if not, we will move on to new business. We're moving on to item 2B, consideration action to approve the 2018 tax property rate, ordinance 2018-13.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. And again, I want to, as we come to the conclusion of our mini-workshops, I want to thank you for hanging in there with us and doing the hard work and as we're ready to roll up our sleeves and face whatever financial challenges that we have. We had a public hearing twice and we've completed our two continuing hearings, had one on the budget as well. The tax rate notice that was in the paper, as we explained to you before, is the same tax rate. So the staff is recommending that the rate that we are proposing is the current tax rate. And so that's what we're proposing per 100. So we're proposing point 4431 per 100 for the proposed tax year that we're entering, which is the same as the preceding tax rate that we had.
Okay, council, you've had the opportunity to go over this during our budgets, budget workshops. Do you have any questions or comments pertaining to the tax rate?
I'd like to move to do the tax rate thing.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor by Councilman He Menace to approve the 2018 tax property rate. Do I have a second?
Oh, so will.
Seconded by Councilwoman Kent Two. Any citizens' comments pertaining to the tax rate? If not, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you, 5-0. Moving on to new business, item 1.
Do you need the time?
It's not a hearing. Okay, moving on to item 1C, consideration and action to approve the collective bargaining agreement.
I move to approve the collective bargaining agreement.
I am out. Any citizens' comments, but then I have a comment as well. Okay, according to the, I mean, going through the collective bargaining agreement because...
You don't understand what I'm saying.
I know, but I'm speaking and then I will let him have the floor. He was walking up.
Yes, citizen's comments.
And I'm not denying him any of that. Just, can you hold on for a moment?
No, I'm just saying you...
Yes, I know. I know, but he was walking up when I started talking. And I'm not denying him the opportunity to speak.
I'm not a denier, that's what you asked, that's all I'm saying.
So what I'm saying is that before we take a complete vote, I'm asking for our city attorney to explain the collective bargaining to the citizens and the audience. Yeah. Officer Ortiz, the microphone is now yours.
Okay. First of all, I would like to thank the city bargaining team and the Florisville Police Officers Association bargaining team, and thank the city manager and Chief Martinez, Chief Rivera, for all the hard work that they did for us to provide this contract. Basically, what we did was we negotiated a contract for the benefit of the cities, citizens of Florisville, the city and the police department. We did want to do our part to save the city money, so we went ahead and went down on our percentage of yearly raises to 1% to do our part. We know the city is in a financial budget, so that's why we decided to work with the city head in hand. Councilman Nisa was there, so he kind of knows what some of the negotiations went on. And so I really think that this will benefit the city, citizens, the police department. So I just would like to thank you all for, you know, coming to the board and working with us. And that's about all I have to say.
Thank you. Ms. Rodriguez, if you would explain to our citizens the collective bargaining agreement, what it entails and what it has before we take a final vote on it.
Yes, ma'am, I sure will. And Madam Mayor, what I'm going to do is I'm going to go ahead and I'm going to summarize page by page pretty much. And that way I will tell you what page we're on so that everybody will be able to be on the same page as I.
It's echoing.
Yeah, we can barely hear up here. I think the audience can hear better than we can.
I don't know why.
Have a loud voice if you want me to. I can even, I don't even think I need a mic. I don't know what it is, but I can...
We can't hear through here either?
Okay, yeah, I think that helps us quite a bit on the council. Thank you.
Okay. If I may, Madam Mayor, we're going to start on page eight. I'm going to go ahead and give you the meat of the whole agreement and then we'll take it from there. Page eight, this agreement basically is for three years, so it will start October 1st, 2018, will continue until September 30th, 2021. Okay? Basically, they've also under section D, if there is a rollback, they will basically agree to renegotiate the contract. Those are the two important things that I gathered from this page. Okay? Any questions on that page so far?
You say page eight?
Yes, sir.
Eight.
Look at page eight, and that talks about the duration of the agreement. Paragraph one tells you it will be effective starting on October 1st, 2018, until 30th of September, 2021. First paragraph, section A, page eight. Everybody there? Okay, yes? Okay. Basically, section D deals with rollback. If the city is in a financial straits and there has to be a rollback tax rate, they will agree to reopen it and start renegotiations. That's under section D. Under section C, it does tell you that during negotiations, there will be a 3% increase. Good to go? Yeah. Maintenance of standards says pretty much self-explanatory. Page 10, the no-strike clause, basically indicating that the city will not lock out any officers and the officers agree not to engage in any sort of strike or anything that will not be in keeping with this agreement. Okay? Page 11 talks about non-discrimination. That's just standard. Okay? Then we go on to page 12. Basically outlines some of the association activities, and I'm going to go ahead and move on because I'm going to get you to where I know that the council is really interested in. And that will be under page 15, and we're talking about compensation on page 15. Talks about how officers will be compensated. There is a two-week period, they get paid every two weeks. It talks about their education pay. 68 college or more hours, they will receive an additional $150 per pay period if they have a bachelor's degree, that's under subsection B, number two, $200 pay period. Number three, if they have a master's degree, they will get an additional $275 per pay period. That's under number three, section B. Section C outlines the uniform allowance. My understanding is that the agreement indicates that the city agrees to allocate $1,000 per physical year for each member of the police department. Okay? Any unused allowances will not be carried over. They're either used or that's it. Okay? Section D talks about certification pay. That deals with officers that are at intermediate, advanced, or master license carrying officers, and it outlines how much additional monies they also will get per pay period. Then we move on to page 16, and this deals with assignment pays. There are different officers that we have that have various certifications. However, the agreement has been that they will only be compensated for two extra certifications, meaning if we have someone that's a detective, they also do field training and bike patrol, they'll only get paid for two, not for each and every certification that they might have. I know that during the bargaining agreement, there were discussions of a need for individuals who are intoxicilizer operators, and I think that that basically is down there at the very bottom, and it indicates that's going to be $50 per pay period because of the need of having that individual. And trying to encourage, do you remember that, Councilman Nisa? Yes, sir.
My question is, I understand two of them, but B is a certification pay. Item D.
Which one are you talking about?
Item, section D, the certification.
Yes.
Is that classified as one? Then they're also allowed to have one on E or two more on E?
My understanding is the certification pay, those are different, the intermediate, advanced, and masters, those are different certifications than what is outlined under section E.
Okay, the wording is not a bright, then to show it's different. So we need to clarify that for the officers, don't lose anything.
Yes, sir.
On that, on that section, it's a section E, and that's assignment pay, not certification pay.
Yes, the certification is something different.
Does it say, I want you to make sure you guys get credited for it because here it does, it's under section D, but it says certification. Section D has the word certification, so technically the way it's wrote is you get one for D and one for E, and it's not what you're asking for. You're asking for two for E and one for D, which we agree with.
Yes.
But if you go to court, you might be able to lose it. So you need to get two of them.
Yes.
Okay.
And I understand where you're coming from, Councilman Nisa. Basically clarifying that certification pay under subsection D is separate and apart from their certifications that are outlined as their assignment pays.
They don't get anything pulled away?
No. On section E, if you look at the last sentence, it says two assignment pays. So the only thing that they could get from assignment pay is only two certifications. So like she said, if you were, if you're a detective and you're FTO certified, then you can't get any other assignment pay on this chart. So for example, like myself, I'm a detective, and then I want to get the bilingual pay. Well, I could only get a detective and bilingual, and even though I'm bike patrol certified, I won't be able to do bike patrol because I'm already a detective and then I'm getting the bilingual pay.
Yes. And just to inform the council, the bilingual pay is actually something that was brand new and that I think that everybody that was present at that conference basically believed that that was something that would be in the betterment of the citizens of Florisville.
Is that going to be a test, anything to get bilingual?
That is correct. There will be a test, they will have to pass that test in order to be able to get certified and be bilingual certified.
Is Lieutenant Evans and Chief Will, once that will come up with a test that we need to pass to get the bilingual pay?
Yes. Okay. And I think, I know that during negotiations, the amounts were negotiated and everybody there basically went back and forth and then finally reached a point that they thought was reasonable, not only for the citizens of Florisville, but for the police officers as well. Okay. And then we'll move on. Page 18, and this basically is pretty new. Is that correct, Detective?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Okay, this is the physical fitness incentive program, and this will go into effect starting September 30th, 2020. That's to allow the officers to get ready for it and get in shape and be ready.
Yes, ma'am.
Because now with the physical fitness incentive program, if you don't pass, guess what? You're going to lose your money. You're going to go down in pay. You will start by losing one point off your pay. So we thought that the physical fitness was something that was very important for, not only for the citizens of Florisville, but for the police department as well, the police officers.
So basically, B for the last year of the contract, an officer can get either 2%, but if he passes his evaluation and his physical fitness, then he can get up to 4%.
However, if he does not pass, he will be deducted.
Yes. When he does not get a good evaluation or passes the physical fitness, he's only entitled to 2%.
That is correct. And this will be conducted every September. There will be a manual. Okay, so they will know what is expected of them and what they have to do in order to be able to pass it. And if they don't, once again, Mayor, they will lose some money. Okay? Now, moving on to page 20, this is compensatory time, overtime, sick days, and holidays. I know that the council has been worried about some individuals that have had a heck of a lot of hours and stuff of that nature. So I think that what we did was, or everybody that was there, tried to find a way to encourage the police department and the officers to take vacation time and to use their sick leave and stuff of that nature, because we want everybody to be as best health as possible, both mentally and physically, and we thought that that was something that was very, very important. Okay, so I think what's important on this is under section A, it indicates that in order to do overtime, you have to get that overtime approved by the chief of police, and it has to be approved at least two hours prior to the overtime being worked, except during emergency circumstances. And that, once again, must be approved by the chief of police.
Or is this a knee?
Okay. Under compensatory time, basically they can accrue up to 120 hours of compensatory time. However, it says when the officer is approaching the maximum amount, the city will require that the officer utilize the time. Again, what's trying to make sure that the officer is mentally and physically capable of continuing to do his job and asking, the city is asking him to take time off and sick days and stuff of that nature.
If I can just say something about...
Yes.
The comp time, some of the officers like to do comp time, so they save the city money so they don't have, the city doesn't have to pay overtime. So that's why there's a limit of 120 hours of comp time, that if they go or reach that level, they have to use a comp time. So we won't lose money by getting an officer to pay to come out and cover his time off and then we have to pay overtime, so that's why they have a limit on comp time.
Okay. Under section C, sick days, under this section, I thought what was really good for the city was that the officer could donate any of his unused sick leave to anyone that is an employee of the city of Florisville at the officer's discretion, meaning that they could donate into a sick bank the hours or the days that they haven't utilized. Doesn't have to be to a fellow police officer, they, basically, to any employee of the city of Florisville. Okay? The following paragraph, I think, is extremely important because it does indicate that if a police officer leaves without giving notice, that basically they will lose any of, it says, if a police officer does not submit a two-week notice prior to leaving employment with the Florisville Police Department, they will not be entitled to receive payment for sick leave. And I thought that that was something that was really, really important for the city. Okay? Okay, we'll move on to page 21. Everybody okay so far? Councilmembers, Madam Mayor? Yes? Okay. Okay. So then we move on to vacation days. My understanding is that there were some vast discussions over holidays and stuff of that nature because there was some cutting of certain holidays, and those are contained in the bargaining agreement, one of them being an extra day that was actually taken off that was for the peanut festival. But I think that that is, it's outlined in the agreement and it was agreed. Under this section, what's important to my standing basically is under holiday time where it does indicate that the officers may accrue up to 140 hours of holiday time. Okay? And once again, I think that everybody tried to limit the holidays and stuff of that nature, and it was good that everybody agreed on that. Section E deals with vacation time, and it does indicate from zero to five years, they get four hours. Five to 10 years, six hours, and 10 years plus, eight hours. And under two, not to exceed 600 hours based on a 10-hour day. And I thought that that was something that was extremely important because there was worries by the council members of being excessive amounts that were outstanding. Page 22 deals with seniority, vacation, and layoffs, and that is pretty much the language that was already in there. I don't think that we tweaked anything in there. Under retirement plan, under page 23, that just outlines as well that the city contributes 10%, the employee contributes 5%, being a two-to-one match. My understanding is that this is something that likewise Detective has gone on and has been the same verbiage that was utilized.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Page 24, this we thought was extremely important about stress leave and counseling outlines basically if there is a situation where life is taken and stuff of that nature about how everyone agreed that a psychologic or some kind of psychiatric screening should be utilized. Once again, keeping in mind that we want what's best for the citizens of Florisville and for the police officer to be mentally healthy. Of interest on that would also be section C where it does indicate that if an officer leaves or retires from the city of Florisville, if they were in good standing, that they will be given their badge. Section D talks about how the chief of police will maintain one master personnel file for each officer. The rest of the verbiage basically will indicate what will be contained in that file. Under page 25, I thought what would be interesting or which was important was under number six, says any such document, anything that is placed in the file, if there is a hearing and it's determined that there was not enough evidence or no need for any sort of reprimand, then any documentation reflecting that will be taken out. Correct, Detective?
Yes, ma'am.
Six, okay. Okay. And basically without, you must obtain an officer's written permission before an employee may release any of the information to anyone else. Okay? That's under page 25. Under page 26, basically it's about dealing with internal affairs, disciplinary action, how they will be handled, the process that must be taken. I thought that what, I think that what's new on there, if you look at page 27, under section B, and it deals about appeals, and this was a heated discussion because it was determined that any officer that is reprimanded or demoted or suspended for three days or less may not appeal that written reprimand.
Yes, ma'am.
And that was a heated discussion, but then it came to, the parties came to an agreement on that. Anything that is four days or more, then basically they get to appeal it to the city manager, and anything over 10 days, at that point, they can go to an independent hearing officer, an arbitrator. Okay? And of interest on there is that if it does go to an arbitrator, then the city could be responsible for those fees.
The city and association are clean.
Okay. And then basically the rest of page 28 will deal with that, and page 29 as well. Page 30 will talk, talks about basically about their contract agreements, how they must, if there is agreement, they have to bring it within 30 days, and if they do not, then it's done. Okay, that's on page 30. Page 31 outlines arbitration that will be utilized, and then page 33 talks about promotions. And I think on this one, Detective, I think there was heated debate whether there was an assistant police chief and stuff of that nature, and that's where then the promotions that were discussed or outlined under section B as the sergeant and the lieutenant, and what is needed in order for someone to be able to qualify for that status, for that title. Is that correct, Detective?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Under page 34, basically, section B, it does indicate about the appointment of police officers, and basically, an individual who leaves the Florisville Police Department could be rehired. could be rehired. My understanding is that under the agreement, he can only be rehired or reappointed if the chief of police recommends him to be rehired. Okay, that's under section B-A. Section D, page 35, outlines...